Okay, this Cleveland Heights City Council meeting is called to order at... Oh, boy. A little bit late, right? Sorry about that. Let me apologize to everybody. We got into a pretty robust conversation in the other room. Roll call, please.
Cobb. Larson. Kuta.
Here.
Boyd. Russell.
Here.
Maddox. Petrus.
Here.
Nobody's absent, so we'll go right to amendments to the agenda. I want to make a motion to move ordinance 020-2024 to first reading for adoption. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Eddie, let's do a roll call vote.
Boyd. Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Kuta.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Maddox.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes from previous meeting. Anybody find any problems? Okay. Communication from the mayor.
All right, so first, I would like to inform the council and the public that we've been notified by NOAACA that two locations within the city of Cleveland Heights have been selected for the installation of fast charger, that's DC fast charger ports. Those two locations that have been selected are at the Heights Library's Lee Road branch, where we are expecting four ports of DC fast charging at the library. The other location is here at Cleveland Heights City Hall, four ports for DC fast charging. We have submitted our confirmation of this to NOAACA, and we're looking forward to the next steps. And we'll keep you updated on how that goes. Second, I would like to request an amendment to the agenda to move forward the WXZ Taylor-Tutor pieces of legislation. And this is based on our expectation of the amount of public comment that we will be potentially receiving this evening, and the time constraints and family obligations of our staff who need to go home. And so would be required here to provide insight and input into that if required. So I'd like to move that up if that's possible. Actually, this may be moot. He may already be out of the building.
Okay, Mayor, but just so I understand you, do you want us to actually vote on that before we go through any other part of the agenda? Or are you talking about just moving it up to the front of the agenda when we get to legislation?
Well, I think I'll rely on the law directors.
Request would have been to move it up on the agenda so that council could act on it while it had an opportunity to hear from Brian Anderson. But I think that he assessed that this would happen later. Oh, he is here. So yes, then with Brian available and the developer, I believe, is still here as well. Then if council is in a position to act, it should act, and then they can all leave the building.
Okay, so we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, what's the number of the piece of the legislation?
190... No.
No, that's...
93. Sorry about that.
Okay. I would like a motion to move 193-2024 to the front of the agenda.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussions? Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Mayor, did you have any more on your report?
Nothing further, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll go to the city administrators' report. Okay. Well, I just want to say, City Administrator Williams was in rough shape last week, but he's looking good today. So I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, that's true. That does sound better. Got a sore back. It's kind of a Rodney Dangerfield thing, you know? In rough shape last week. Okay. No department reports. Let's see. Okay, so report of the clerk of council.
Nothing to report.
Not a thing. All right. Public comment. So we're going to do legislative items first, and then general public comment. Let me remind you that you have three minutes to speak. And we're here to listen. So any agenda item?
Yes.
Oh. Sorry, that shows you how long my attention span is. Okay, we're going to do... My bad. We are going to do this one piece of legislation first, which is 193. And we'll bring Brian Anderson up, Assistant Director, Assistant Economic Development Director.
Do you want me to read it first?
Yes, please.
I've got Resolution 193-2023 on fourth reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with WXZ CPV LLC concerning the redevelopment of the Taylor-Tutor buildings and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
So thank you. We are excited to have this legislation ready to go by the fact that this is a fourth reading. It is a long time coming to finish off the negotiations between the developers, the city, and the school district. And we're excited to be able to work through the last of those issues. And this is another longcoming transformative project for the city. It was the end of 2021 when we put out this RFP. So getting those responses, picking the developer, then working with the developer over the last couple of years, and finally bleeding over into 2024 to be able to have it all teed up with this development agreement, tax increment financing agreement, as well as the school compensation agreement. So we're certainly happy to answer any questions regarding the agreement itself, any questions for the developer who is here, you know, as well. And one other final piece of housekeeping, there is a trailing TIF ordinance that will be passed then after this. The school district is expected to act on their component of this with the compensation agreement at either a special meeting or their next scheduled meeting in March.
Questions? Yes?
Not yet.
For purposes of the discussion.
I see. We have not done a motion yet to adopt that. Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt 193-2024?
So moved.
And we do have a second discussion? Well, I'll just say this is, I think, a very transformative project for the city. Taylor Road is one of the areas that I think we all identified as needing a facelift, and this is a big shot in the arm to where some of us, young people, when we were young, and there was Heights Furniture and Toy, and, oh my God, just... There was Katz's Variety Store. Trying to picture all of this. Milner's, a little variety store on the corner of DeSoda and Taylor. This will be a real big shot in the arm for the neighborhood. And I want to thank Matt Weimer and your team. You guys did a fantastic job. So we have a second, and we're ready to vote. Eddie?
Sorry, Maddox. Russell.
Aye.
Kuta.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Boyd. Larson.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You guys can go home. Eddie, we're ready to do public comments.
Sarah Olson.
Everybody, when you come up, make sure that you say your name and the street you live on and the city.
We have agenda items and then non-agenda items, though, so you're on non-agenda items.
Hi, I'm Sarah Olson. I'm on Sycamore Road, proud Cleveland Heights resident, going on seven years now this summer. The reason why I'm here this evening is I saw that there is action for renewal for our surveillance cameras, and I have questions and concerns. There's been 20 years of research to show and provide that surveillance cameras do not prevent, stop, or solve the majority of crimes. Actually, there's an average of 24% algorithm accuracy on crimes being reported that leads to wrongful convictions, over indictments, and many, many, many injustices, injustices that we see on a regular basis in our communities. The biggest concern that I found researching surveillance systems, specifically cameras, is the third-party companies that monitor these systems as well as the police. So the police monitor, but they have 24/7 moderators that moderate the live feeds all over the country, depending on which third-party company they use. Without rules, legislation, or regulation from our own community, it subjects us to illegal activities that occur. There was a woman that was recorded for 80 minutes while in the nude in the home of her apartment because these surveillance cameras can zoom all the way in. Again, these are third-party companies that are monitoring these surveillance systems. There's been police misuse. In Washington, DC, a sergeant used the surveillance cameras to target an LGBTQ bar and then pull up the license plates of the patrons to figure out which ones were married to women and then blackmailed them for exposure on what they seen because they have the video evidence of where their husband was partaking after work. There is numerous thousands of stories regarding the violations and the lack of civil liberties when we entrust third-party companies to monitor our communities. I am a firm believer that we should have community citizen oversight. Dayton, Ohio, and Yellow Spring, Ohio, have taken on this initiative and have been successful with monitoring and auditing, citizens auditing the feed themselves. So do we currently have audits on the feeds that are being monitored? Are we seeing what the moderators are looking at? Are we watching and looking to see if they're zooming into the apartments by the nearby cameras? Where are all our public surveillance cameras? These are public surveillance cameras. We should know where the location of these are. We need some sort of communication to what is being watched in our community. I understand that being in public, being in public, you are, you're subject to recording. However, whoever moderates these cameras, there's other legalities that are occurring all over this country for the last 20 years. And it started with big notice of these violations. Were brought to our attention, small but big, Edward Snowden in 2013, when he blew the whistle on government overreach and violation of the Patriot Act. And we're seeing that today all over the country. Thank you.
Adam Dew.
Hi, council. I'm Adam Dew. I live on Demmington, and I'm a member of the Rec, Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I do not swim. I probably should, but I don't. But I'm pretty excited that Heights, for Heights residents and especially our seniors, that lifeguard legislation is being considered this evening. With this legislation, council has the opportunity to give citizens the ability to swim in a gorgeous, nearly new pool that the city will have zero responsibility to maintain. And what's great is that with the ability to sell pool passes that the city will have, this could end up costing the city next to nothing in actual dollars. In talking with the Heights Athletic Director, Joe DiMatto, I can tell you that we can have lap swim in the mornings next week if Director Ledbetter is directed to staff the guards. I can tell you from speaking with Dan Buden, who runs the Tiger Shark Swim Program at Heights, that he's happy to work with Director Ledbetter on staffing and finding those guards, helping him recruit those guards if Director Ledbetter needs that help. I have a Heights junior who's currently a Cumberland lifeguard. He's also ready to take some of those 6:00 AM shifts if need be. This doesn't have to be a permanent solution. We can start with a few days a week in the morning, maybe a two-hour session on the weekend for family swim. And maybe someday we will get that city-owned aquatic center, but that's clearly years away. And in the meantime, we have a swimming solution that is teed up and ready to go. We just have to put it into place. Again, it's a chance for the city to solve a problem here. This is some low-hanging fruit, and I really encourage council to put a check mark in the win column for residents and vote yes on that legislation. Thank you.
Jeffrey Gifford.
Jeffrey Gifford, Meadowbrook Boulevard. He said it much more eloquently than I can, but I'm here in support of that particular legislation. I think that it's a great way for us to engage with the high school and solve some problems with wintertime swim. And I think it's going to be also a great opportunity for some of the younger folks to learn how to show up on time for a job and show some responsibility in that area. I think this is an important need, and this is a good way to solve the issue. Thank you.
Scott Watcher.
Scott Watcher. I live on Edgerton Road in University Heights. And I just want to echo the previous two comments about the... I'm very thankful that Cleveland Heights Council has the lifeguard monetary support on the agenda today. And I do hope they vote in favor for it and start using that gorgeous pool. An indoor pool for the community, for the whole district, can be, it's more positives than the negatives, and can be a real draw for people to remain in this community and to come to this community. So I hope they, I hope as council you consider this and vote for funding of the lifeguards and get that pool. It is a gorgeous, practically new pool with beautiful window views, and it can't be beat. And I hope you guys find it in your heart to vote for it. Thank you very much.
Astrid Burkle.
Can you say that again?
Astrid Burkle.
Oh, there's Astrid.
Hello, my name is Astrid Burkle, and I live on St. Albans Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As one of the approximately 6,000 transgender youth living in Ohio today, I am grateful that my city is standing up against HB 68 with Resolution 19-2024. I have lived in Cleveland Heights my... Excuse me. I have lived in Cleveland Heights my whole life, and I have always felt safe to be in my community. It is important to take a stand and fight for what is right. Change has to start here, and this resolution helps spark that change. In the words of Eli Vesel, "We must take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented." If you've never met or spoken with a transgender person to learn about the oppression we are experiencing, hi, now you have. I encourage everybody in this room to talk to transgender people in our community and learn about our experiences with this legislation. I also encourage the city council to consider what else you can do to make Cleveland Heights an inclusive and safe community for everyone. Cleveland Heights is more than just a city. It's a community. They say home is where the heart is. Cleveland Heights is where my heart is, and Cleveland Heights is my home. Thank you.
Astrid, Astrid, can you hear me? Thank you so much for coming, and I got to tell you, the best part of this was looking at the smiles on everybody's face.
Drew Herzig. And keep it to your agenda item comment, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you. Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Councilor's Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilor Petrus for bringing forward this resolution opposing House Bill 68. This is another attempt by the legislature to make it impossible for transgender people to exist in Ohio. It is state-sponsored terrorism. Imagine the terror any parent must feel to think that their child might be deprived of life-saving health care simply by living in Ohio. No wonder trans families are planning to move out of the state with this horrific kind of legislation. Any opposition to this is absolutely essential. Terrorizing children must never be allowed to pass. We must always speak up against terrorizing children. So again, thank you, Councilor Petrus, for passing this. Thank you, council, for voting for, I mean, bringing this forward, for voting for it, kind of thing. Thank you for the community for showing up for this. Where will it end? Where will it end? They're coming after all of us, and we have to all stand up against them. So please, thank you, and do this tonight. Thanks very much.
Nancy Ballin.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Ballin. I live on Cummings Road in Cleveland Heights. I just wanted to thank you for this ordinance that's proposed to let us use the Heights High Swimming Pool. This might be nitpicking, but I just kind of gave pause a moment when I was reading through, and it said, "Funding for lifeguards for community swimming events." And I just want to make sure that those events include lap swimming and water aerobics because I think of those as like more than just a knockoff event. They're like our lifestyle to go there and swim every week. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. CJ Nash.
Hi, CJ Nash, Vandemar Street. I just want to let you know I'm in favor of the cameras. The majority of how I have felt about cameras for a long time has to do with my skepticism on government, and I did 23 years in government. And I know there are a lot of problems with them. And in another city, I might feel differently. And here in Cleveland Heights, I feel more comfortable with the idea of cameras. On top of that, and what really sways my opinion on it, is you guys have heard from us many, many times. We need more security in the Noble area, and we keep pounding our feet for more security. You guys have heard us, but the cameras, to me, help with that. And if it wasn't for the fact that crime is going up, even though some statistics say it isn't, we're living it. If it wasn't for that, I may feel differently, but we need something, and we need to increase our security, and I think the cameras will help. Thank you.
Juanita Brent.
Thanks, Juanita Brent, 16804 Glendale Avenue. I just happen to be everybody's in this room. If you live in Cleveland Heights, I happen to be your state rep. I want to thank the councilman, Petrus, for introducing Resolution 18-2024. Being at the State House is like being in a prison yard. You laugh about this, but who wants to go to prison? Who constantly want to be in a place of fighting every day? And that's exactly what's going on. There is attack upon our community. There's an attack upon the people that we love and we respect. And no matter who you love, how you love, it should be respected. Kids should not have to live in fear of not being able to play sports in their schools. Because of Ohio, that will happen. You should not be concerned about what will happen to your kids when they go to school or how they interact with schools. That's what's going to happen. To not acknowledge that there's an attack on our LGBTQ plus community, particularly our trans community, that is what's happening every day. No matter if it's House Bill 68, House Bill 8, which is the Don't Say Gay bill, and we could keep on going on, trying to ban drag queen shows. If you're thinking about it, they're doing it at the State House. I had the wonderful opportunity to vote no on House Bill 68 because right is right and wrong is wrong, and House Bill 68 is wrong in all the different ways. What I need you guys to do, because I always like to leave people with homework. So you see me standing here today, and you see our wonderful councilman, Petrus, who introduced this resolution, but we cannot do the work by ourselves. So as many people, and even our youngest one, who came here and came and talked, I need you to come to the State House. I need you to come use your voice at the State House regarding that. I have a wonderful State House update that comes out every week. It just came out today. Normally comes out on Mondays. But, and I need you to sign up for that. So if you got a cell phone, take out my cell, take my cellphone number and email me your, text me your email real quick. I need, I'm talking to y'all behind me. Take off your cellphone. Come on. And you're going to send your email, and you're going to say, "Sign me up." So it's 216-413-8932. Because we need to know when things are happening. If you talk to your councilpeople, talk to your mayor, as soon as something's happened, I'm sending out an email. If there's draft rules that's going on about the problematic transitional health rules that our governor put in there, even though he vetoed it, that was a bait and switch on y'all. It was a bait and switch. Everybody thought he was doing us a favor. He was a whole problem. He made it even worse. So we need to fight together like a fist and not a bunch of fingers. So how are we going to fight? Like a fist and not a bunch of fingers. Thank you so much, councilman. You've come in here in less than two months, and you've done my heart so much warm. For those who did not get the little paper from me, it's just about some money, just $47 million, trying to do my job. My name is Juanita Brent. I just happen to be a state representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for legislative agenda comments.
Okay. I'll just say that I have visited State Representative Brent in Columbus. It's so enlightening and educational. I would suggest it for anybody. So now on to...
One second. What's your name?
My name's Joel. I have the pool and the station. We got in the clock there. And I turned the breaker in. I was the other one in line, so I was waiting for you.
Uh-oh.
Oh, I apologize. I put you on the non-agenda.
I also signed up for the station. My last item was not on the agenda, but I know something about it. You didn't want to go back. My other two left.
Okay, Joanne Segal, then.
Okay, my first topic, I'll go through real quickly. Please provide funding for the lifeguards and any other pool staff that will be necessary to provide a full swim program for the residents of our school district. This includes the swim instructors, who will hopefully be teaching community swim lessons, and the program director, who will be scheduling and overseeing the activities. I recommend you hire Dan Buden to run the program since he's been the swim coach if he's interested in the position. I think that all cities that have residents in our school district should help pay the cost based on the percentage of their city that lives in the district. If they do not, then people who sign up for the programs who don't live in Cleveland Heights should pay a slightly higher fee because the money is coming from the city and not from the school district of the cities that pay taxes to operate this. Okay, number two, I am all for the cameras. There have evidently been at least three separate attacks on innocent citizens merely walking around the business district in recent weeks in Coventry. These attacks have been perpetrated by three children wearing ski masks over their faces. They went up to the victims, and they hit them hard. One fell to the ground, and one had her glasses knocked off and broken. One was a 16-year-old girl, and the other two were elderly. The elderly woman evidently knew who they were, and she reported this to the police anti-administrators at the school where the students attend. She evidently did not get taken seriously. There's been talk on social media about enlisting the help of 19 News. I do hope that our council can intervene before the entire Cleveland area once again has to hear about our problems. Justice must be served. The kids need to go to court, be handed a sentence, and their parents need to be involved. I strongly encourage city council to install cameras around the city wherever practical, but especially in all of our business districts, including parking areas and in and around all of our city parks and recreation areas. I strongly urge city council to see to it that these cameras are kept in working order so that when there is a violent crime or a car break-in, we do not find out again that the cameras were not working. Many neighborhood streets are already under at least partial surveillance, and many residents are ready and willing to allow the police to see the recordings when something on the block happens. Now it is time to do the same for our public areas. The police cannot work alone. I also urge you to do something about the lack of lighting in the business districts, particularly Cedar Lee and Coventry. Thank you.
Diane Hallam. And I do apologize. All you put was safety, so I didn't know if it was related to the agenda.
Diane Hallam, Oxford Road, off of Noble. Cursory search of news and CHPD incident reports reveals this. January 5th, at 3:00 PM, 10 shots were fired at the Rushly and Hartwood intersection as kids were leaving Monosolo Middle School. Houses were left with bullet holes, and two cars supposedly had been broken into. We've not had any follow-up about this frightening and alarming incident. November 4th, overnight shooting on Grayton Road. November 5th, Tanya, someone else over here, finds a broken window and a bullet lodged in the wall of her home from that gunfire. Also, November 5th, shots fired into a residence on Randolph. November 7th, two people shot in their car on St. Albans. November 7th, Quilliam's robbery and shooting. November 9th, 1:30 AM, Quilliam's man shot in his car while coming home from work. November 9th, 14-year-old shot near Noble and Elmore. November 9th, Friday evening, teen shot. November 17th, two men shot in the head. One dies. We have not heard nothing about it. one dies. We have not heard nothing about it. I can go on and on, because there's a whole lot of them. We had asked about cameras being put up in the Noble-Nila district area and along Quilliam's and Noble. These are areas that have rampant shootings repeatedly. This is only in the last, I mean, that was just two months. Oops, sorry. I can't move my pages. I ask, would any reasonable person look at this and not say, "What the heck is going on?" We are concerned about the lack of words of concern for us and for our children. Where are the words that we believe that the city administration should be saying to say they actually care about our safety, our fears and our worries? We deserve the quality of life that exists in other business districts and neighborhoods, and we would encourage the police chief, the mayor, and the city administration to meet with our group of residents who are trying to improve our neighborhoods. I would like to point out also that an article about related to violence prevention, I gotta say, I was bothered to see that in our city update, somehow it was promoted that we've got the director living here, but why hasn't any of those people spoken to us with all of these shootings that have been going on? There's been silence. We've not been approached, and these people say that you need the community to be involved. The teens need safe places to go to socialize, meet up, find recreation and other diversions, and we're not getting any indications that that's a concern at all. As far as the crime goes, cameras, I believe, will help catch these people. Thank you.
Tanya, you also put safety down. Are you, okay.
Tanya Horn, 840 Grayton Road. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to share an incident that occurred at my home on February 3rd. Some of you may have heard about this, some of you may not, and I felt important to come to council and the community to hear about it, and it is around safety. I want to say that I really appreciate the officer that showed up at my house, Perez, Captain Sitnar, who I talked to, several detectives came to my house, Jeremy Young, William Robertson, and I also wanted to thank Danny Williams, Davida Russell, and Toni Kuda for the attention that they gave me to this matter. So what happened on February 3rd, we heard gunshots on Grayton Road, and like a lot of us, at first I thought they were fireworks, but then I thought, no, this is February, so there's no fireworks going off. It was a gun, and I didn't think anything of it, because it's kind of a normal for us. And so the next morning, what I found was one of those bullets came into my house, through my window in the living room, through the fireplace wall, out the wall, into my dining room. And if we had have been doing the things that we normally do around 8 o'clock, eating dinner downstairs in the dining room, it could be a different story. So we have a problem, as a lot of the people have said today, and I want to see some action. I continue to hear people complain about this. I continue to hear people come up. I mean, this has been going on for years, and it's become a new normal for us, and I hope that you guys will take some action. A call to action is what I'm asking for from council, from the city. No more surveys to the Noble neighborhood asking what we want. I think we said what we need, so that's plain and clear. And when I think about the money that's been allocated to this city from ARPA funds, I'm kind of disheartened with the number of, the percentage that's going towards safety, $750,000. We are seeing more money go towards things opposed to people, and we need to have people be a priority. We put forth $1 million, over to almost $2 million to a stamp, to the ice rink, things of that nature, and not a lot of money towards safety. And we really need the city to really make it a priority, people over things.
Okay, that's it for legislative agenda comments. So should we move on to non-agenda?
Please.
Maurice Rhodes. Did I pronounce that right?
Good evening. I have three orders of business. First order...
Can I ask you real quickly, can you say your name and where you live?
Mr. Rhodes, Zulu, 25 Seventh Circle, that sorry Seventh Tower, that CMHA building. Listen, first order of business, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kuda to Mr. Mayor, listen, two years, more than two years ago, Mr. Ellington, your so-called housing inspector, then inspection at 25 Seventh Circle, that sorry CMHA building, he said it was rat-infested. Your chief inspector did nothing. He didn't take it to court. That sorry law department did nothing. I'm living there with mice. I'm paying rent and living with mice. Now, I want something done about it. Look, I don't want to see another mouse. I want that sorry chief inspector out there at the mall, and I want, I want the sorry law department to take CMHA to court. I understand what's happening here, because CMHA is a Cuyahoga County Democratic political patronage machine full of idiots, incompetent people. They only hire it because they slept with somebody, because they kissed somebody's laurels, but I got mice, and you want me to pay rent. Second order of business, I don't see my flag flying up there. This Black History Month, you say you're inclusive, diverse, I ain't got my flag flying up there, but I got that rainbow flag flying up there whenever I want to. Black History Month, I'm almost over with now. Where's my flag? I got pride, zuru. Third order of business, this sorry Cleveland Heights Court, more than two years ago, I put my rent in escrow. That sorry magistrate cheated me. She lied. She said I testified that the loud music didn't hurt my health and safety, like I'm boo-boo fool, like I didn't graduate from Central State University, like I don't have a bachelor's degree in business and political science, like I ain't all that, like I don't know the law. I ain't got no degree, but I bang with any of you. Now, I'm back in this sorry Cleveland Heights Court, and this silly magistrate is saying that I took another ride. I went small, small claims, and she put in ruling that I can't get $500. I can't get a portion of my rent money back because of small claims. Small claims every day. A business is sued, relatives are sued, brands are sued, because they promised to give something, and I haven't received it. I paid rent, and I haven't received what I paid rent for. I got loud music, and I got, and I got mice. I got mice infection.
Maurice, unfortunately, we're out of time, but I do, I do hear everything you're saying, and I want to talk to you. We haven't talked in about a year, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a call tomorrow.
Yeah, I want to thank you.
I do appreciate you coming.
Melody Joy Hart?
I'm Melody Joy Hart. I live at 2976 Monmouth Road. I will be brief. I have another meeting to go to, so I will just give my comments briefly. I'm speaking tonight on two subjects, ARPA and Gaza. In regard to ARPA, last year, when I was in council, we completed the ARPA allocations last fall. It's important to get these paid out as soon as possible. I've gotten calls from some of the not-for-profits who provided proposals and were awarded an ARPA allocation, and are awaiting contracts and funding. We are getting well through the first quarter, and they haven't been able to start their efforts, putting their good work behind schedule, and possibly precluding certain things with specific time elements from being completed this year. The funds must be paid to not-for-profits before the end of the year, and then they have a deadline to spend it. If that don't happen, the city loses the funds. Additionally, there were allocations for programs for businesses and residents impacted by COVID, and those programs and applications still must be created. Please set aside topics that are less time-sensitive to complete these with diligent. On Gaza, I provide a resolution, which we all voted to pass condemning the attack by Hamas on Israel. With the continued war and many innocent civilians on both sides dying, I provided three options to the council. It was open for you to further negotiate if desired. I spoke to some of the Jewish, some in the Jewish community, and some defending Palestinians, not Hamas, defending Palestinians. I then provided three options to council for a resolution regarding the Mideast War. We are a city where we say, "All are welcome." We support our Jewish community, who is suffering as innocent relatives are endangered in Israel, but we must also support others who are suffering with innocent Palestinian relatives in the conflict region as well. I think we can all agree that innocent people should be protected. Please move forward to come to completion with the resolution that supports our mantra as a city, in that we are all welcome. Reach out as needed to both sides to complete this, and please get the ARPA funds out there. Thank you.
James Williams?
Hi, my name is James Williams, 25 Seventh Circle, and I agree with the gentleman that was just here talking about the rats and the mice, and that he should get representation for those, for those issues. But I wanted to, I wanted to say, "Master, the tempest is raging, the billows are tossing high." I'm sorry, I forgot the song. But anyway, first time for everything, but thank you very much.
Susan Ford?
Hello, my name is Susan Ford, and I live on Mayfield Road in Cleveland Heights. I just wanted to say that the community appreciates, more than you know, the allocation of funds to repair Cumberland for the 2024 season. With the $400,000 budgeted, can someone please get back to me about the timing of the work? I understand that we need a boiler. Has the boiler been purchased? Has the installation of the boiler been scheduled? Have the contractors been scheduled to fix the baby pool? Have the contractors that will fix the cracks in the large pool been hired and scheduled? Has the cleaning and painting crew been scheduled to begin after the cracks are fixed in the large pool? March is quickly approaching, and Cumberland's opening week will be here before we know it. Please get back to me to let me know the timing of repairs. Thank you.
Alan Fetterman?
Hi, my name is Alan Fetterman. I live at 3268 Yucatlai's Boulevard, and my family moved there in 1952. So I can speak with, you know, historical memory, that when there were problems in the city, there was always a very quick and well-executed reaction to it. And I wanted to update that, though, within the last couple of years. Two years ago, currently, I work in a building in the Cedar Fairmont area, which is directly in front of the garage that's now closed. And a couple of years ago, I noticed that whenever it rained, there were huge pools, pools of water, like this, this deep. And I inspected, and I saw that there was areas, a number of areas where it was leaking, but one in particular, the cement had fallen in, and you could see the bricks. And I took pictures of it, and I sent it to the Public Works Department, and they said they'll look into it. A few months later, same thing was probably happening, but at this point, the bricks had fallen in, and you could look up, and you could see nothing but blue skies. And I took pictures of that and sent it to the Public Works Department. They will get to it. Nothing happened until the owner of the building finally met with the, someone from the Works Department, and they patched that one area, but apparently, they neglected the other areas, and so we have a garage and a parking lot that are shut down for indeterminate amount of time. And I want to add to this, that on Lennox, which is the street that is adjacent to the building, there had been barrels, orange barrels, in front of one area, and the asphalt had been sinking in. And I watched this area, and eventually what happened is those, that asphalt sank, and it, there's now a two-foot-deep hole, and it's about this wide and this far from the curb. The barrels are there. Again, I took pictures, sent it to Public Works, and they were going to address it, and they did. They put a metal detour sign on top of the hole, and people still will pull the barrels away and park on top of the detour sign, and it's bent now. And so, you know, what I don't understand is, what is the problem? Do we have not enough money in the budget to address these things when they're small, or do we have inefficiency in the government and not enough oversight? I don't know, and I'd like to, like you to find out. That's all I have to say.
Camille Lautowski?
Hi, my name's Camille Lautowski. I live on Lee Road. Good evening. First, I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and the Recreation Department for initiating the plans to renovate Cumberland Pool. Cumberland Pool is more than a pool, it's a community. Last month's meeting to display the initial fit plans was attended from more than 100 people. It was a great forum for the people's voices to be heard. The architect and the people staffing the stations seemed to really listen to the community. So my question is, what's next? There was some mention that the plans would be online, so more citizens could voice their opinions, ask questions, et cetera. Is this happening? They said the plans incorporating all that feedback would be available for viewing in March. Has the state been set? There needs to be a forum for diverse community input on these new plans. In addition to an in-person meeting, an online resource would be helpful to those who are unable to attend. This might better, give a better cross-section of what the entire community wants, which brings me to what, what is the timeline? I know the city is committed to keeping Cumberland open for the 2024 season, but what about 2025? How is this new building, new build being financed? Has the money appropriated already in the city budget? We don't want to get into a situation where, here are the plans, and then we have to go find the money. Have the engineering firm, the architectural firms, construction manager been hired? If so, who was hired? Any thought to which construction companies are appropriate for this type of project, and who would be available within our timeframe? Construction is booming in Northeast Ohio. We need to get on people's schedules. Who is going to be the project manager, owners of the liaison for this project? It is imperative that there is a devoted individual for a project of this size that is authorized to make decisions that arise in the field during construction. Again, the Cumberland community thanks you for moving forward with this project, and I would appreciate a timely response to these questions. Thank you.
Jack Slater?
Hello, my name is Jack Slater. I live on Berkeley. I am here to speak yet again, as I have for several months now, on the situation in Palestine and the need for the city to pass a call for a ceasefire. Councilman Maddox, thank you in the previous committee of the whole meeting for pushing for this to be brought to the agenda. To the rest of you, I'm really not sure what to say. Councilman Kuda, you promised me personally that you would be sure that I got on the agenda after a meeting in December. You said that this was an extremely important issue to you. You told me that, like me, you wake up every morning, and you see the images on social media. You see the children starving and killed. You see the ruins, and that the implication was that it broke your heart the way that it did mine, that it did so many people here. But I guess not. I guess I misunderstood. I don't know if that was a lie at the time, or a later move of cowardice to back down from that ceasefire resolution. It's especially confusing, because it's not even an unpopular position. It's especially confusing because it's not even an unpopular position. Every single racial and religious group in the United States is more in favor of a ceasefire than against it. Even 50% of Jewish Americans support an immediate and permanent ceasefire compared to 36% who are opposed. And I hear you councilors talk all the time about the political and activist heroes who have inspired you. But it seems to me like the people who have inspired you are the ones that, when things get difficult, stood back. The ones who were not courageous, who said, "Ooh, this is probably a little too controversial for me to touch." And I am humiliated that the reputation of this city that it rightfully earned over decades is being so blatantly sullied by your absolute disregard for this issue. It was embarrassing and pathetic to watch you at that last committee of the whole meeting, as Maddox said, "Why can we not talk about this?" And you all just sat there silently. Just, we just can't. We just can't talk about it. What is it about this genocide that makes it so difficult for you to broach when it was so easy to stand up and talk about Israel's right to self-defense, as though with those 17 books you've read about Israel and Palestine, you didn't know what Israel's right to self-defense looked like in practice? Every time Israel argues self-defense, Palestinians die, mass numbers of Palestinians die, and a basic cursory understanding of history, which you claimed to be deeply familiar with, would help you understand that. Stop embarrassing yourselves, stop embarrassing me, stop embarrassing this city, and pass a ceasefire resolution.
Spencer Everhart.
My name is Spencer. I live on Bell Field. I am a Jew. Her name was Hindra Jab. She lived in Gaza. She was a six-year-old Palestinian girl. It is winter here in Cleveland Heights. It is winter there in Gaza. It's not much warmer in winter there than it is here. Her mother insisted she ride in a car with five other members of their family along the designated safe route to Rafa because it would be warmer and safer. When the IDF attacked, it was not Hind who made the call to the Red Crescent, it was an elder cousin. The elder cousin was killed on the line with the Red Crescent. Hind begged to be saved. "Her cries to be taken away will haunt me until I die." A rescue was negotiated between the Red Crescent and the IDF. Two paramedics were sent in an ambulance. Two weeks of silence. And then bodies found. They knew it was a mission for a six-year-old. It had been negotiated properly. The space was to be cleared for a safe evacuation. Attacking paramedics is a war crime. Was she even alive when they approached, like lambs to the slaughter? What do you think killed her? Starvation? Thirst? Bullets? Maybe her heart gave out from the horror she had experienced watching five members of her family cut down in front of her? What defense is there in murdering a six-year-old awaiting rescue or in murdering paramedics? It is winter there, and it is winter here. The night is dark and cold, but the dawn will come and the winter will end. Killing the flowers will not delay the spring. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Matthew Haberbush. Matthew Haberbush, sorry if I pronounce that wrong.
Hi, my name is Matt Haberbush. I live on Bell Field, and I've lived in Cleveland Heights for four years. I'd like to publicly ask you to all co-sponsor a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. I agree that the former October 16th resolution was rushed, and I think you've heard and seen enough to pass a simple resolution. And specifically, I'd like you to include language that mirrors what was in the previous resolution, which is that the clerk of council is directed to transmit copies of this resolution to President Joe Biden and Ohio senators and congressional representatives. The reason for this is that it would materially help stop this war. I'm here because the United States is funding the IDF and vetoing UN ceasefire votes, and I would like our local democracy to pressure it to stop. Now, after attending the last city council meeting, I don't think you'll all unanimously co-sponsor a resolution like last time. And yes, if you do want to go slower this time, you shouldn't take the emergency route and try to get five votes. So I'd like to publicly ask Representative Maddox to choose an already drafted resolution like the one co-authored by Melody Joy Hart, or even a copy of Toledo's recent resolution. Get at least one cosigner so that there's a second one that's introduced. Get as many cosigners as possible, and get it checked with the law director, and then submit it to the agenda so that it's actually on the agenda, so that we in Cleveland Heights finally have some language to talk about. And I think it goes to the committee of the whole. I read the codified ordinances. So, for example, here is the city of Toledo's legislation that was just passed, a resolution. I'll just read it there for it. It's very short. "That the Toledo City Council expresses its unwavering support and sympathy for all Palestinian, Israeli, Muslim, Jewish, Christian, and all their members of the Toledo community who have been impacted by the atrocities of this war. That the Toledo City Council called for an immediate lasting negotiated bilateral ceasefire, release of all hostages, and unrestricted humanitarian aid at the levels recommended by the United Nations for the Palestinian people." And the third thing is that the Toledo City Council condemns all forms of anti-Arab and anti-Palestinian racism, antisemitism, and Islamophobia, each of whom have the right to learn, work, worship, gather, advocate, mourn, and celebrate free from intimidation, harassment, doxing, and fear of violence. I do not think that this is as decisive as a potential ceasefire resolution is thought about as it currently stands. Okay, where's the last thing? So if this resolution was in front of you, would you vote in favor of it on behalf of the city of Cleveland Heights? That's something I would like you to think about. We have a responsibility to de-escalate all the harm that we create, and as a democracy, we are responsible for the wars that we fund. It is affecting us here. It's affecting us here. Please help stop it. Thank you.
Tan Meisha.
My name is Tan Meisha, and I live on Cedar Road. I'm here to talk about taxes and how my taxes are being used to fund a genocide. You can do things to bring an end to this. As previous speakers have already mentioned, this is not a symbolic resolution. This can be used in further efforts to bring an end to these atrocities. We are asking you to please introduce a resolution and pass this resolution so this can stop. I want to speak on a few matters that others haven't touched on yet. I'm myself a member of the NOLSW Labor Union. As of right now, major labor unions, including the UAW, AFL-CIO, have come out and supported a ceasefire resolution. I encourage you, if you're a member of a labor union or believe that labor unions are important, to stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters in Palestine. Furthermore, I want to show statistics that show that 61% of all voters, including 76% of Democrats, support a ceasefire. This is what your constituents are asking. The longer we go without a ceasefire, the further you are complicit in what is going on right now. You have the tools to bring an end to this. We are asking you once again to pass a resolution. Just earlier today, the US vetoed a resolution at the UN that would have brought a ceasefire about. That is directly the result of the national-level politicians refusing to listen to their constituents. You can be better, and we believe that you are better than that. We believe you have it within you to pass this resolution. Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Shant Zerub. Apologies if I pronounce that wrong.
Hi, my name is Shant Zerub. I live on Meadowbrook. I've been a Cleveland Heights resident for about 28 years, since I've been born. I went to Fairfax. I went to Roxboro. I graduated from Heights High in 2014. So the reason I tell you this is to let you guys know that I am a Heights boy for the last 28 years. My dad and my mom were in Cleveland Heights for 10 years before me, so that's almost 40 years of history in Cleveland Heights. My family is also from Palestine, specifically from Rafa. And my mom is a Black American. So with that being said, it is imperative that we push in Cleveland Heights for a ceasefire resolution. I was here when the owner of Brennan's Colony died, and I saw the way that our community rallied around him. I've seen our community rally around other social issues throughout the 28 years that I've been here. I've had 50 family members in my family killed as a result of this genocide. We've had Cleveland Heights graduates die as a result of this genocide. Cleveland Heights is a city that prides itself on being progressive, that prides itself on being a space for every single person that could possibly be here. When you look at Cleveland Heights, it is supposed to be the model of what we would want for any city across America. That's why so many people are proud to say they're from Cleveland Heights. We're from the Heights. And so with that being said, we have an opportunity to push for major change in Cleveland Heights. It starts here. And I've been doing this ever since I came back from college, when I had the opportunity to work with some of you with Safer Heights, when I got to talk to some of you guys one-on-one. So I know that you guys care for the city, and I know that you guys care for its residents. But what I'm asking you is to show me that you guys do. Take an action. Words do not just mean they're not just empty. Sometimes we have to prove that through our actions, and an action that we could all take, that everybody here can take, is introducing and passing a ceasefire resolution on behalf of the Palestinians like myself that have been affected. Thank you.
Finally, I have Drew Herzog up again.
You have two? I put them on the same sheet of paper for objective. Okay. You can go after Drew. No, you just should have indicated one and the other. Sorry. Oh, he might have left. Then you're up, Joanna Segal.
My first topic is not nearly as important as the second one, so I'll say very little. I agree with Susan Ford regarding Cumberland Pool. Thank you for moving forward with it. The boiler, the leaks, the baby pool, clean up after the bigger jobs are done. I went to the community forum last month. I made all comments on all the little Post-it notes, and I'm just wondering now what's going on and what the schedule is. The second non-agenda item is hard for me to say, but I'm going to say it. I do not want you to come up with a resolution regarding the Middle East. It will not stop this war. I want the war to stop. I don't want harm done to Palestinians. I feel horrible. I do. But I do not want a proclamation regarding the Middle East. And I have a rhetorical question for you. Will there be another resolution when Hamas full-on attacks Israel again after a ceasefire? Because Hamas has said they will not stop until they are done. So are you going to come back again with a third resolution? I'm not so sure there should have been a first resolution. If I had known what was going to be happening after that, I would have rather there wasn't even a first one. But we didn't know. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank everybody for coming up and speaking. Oh?
Come on up.
Just come on up.
Sarah Olson, Sycamore Road. I am also here to call for a House resolution on ceasefire in Gaza. As a proud Jewish woman, I stand by never again, and I meant it. My ancestors meant it. The children of the Holocaust that are survivors that live here in our city mean that. And when I watch what's happening and I watch our public servants ignore the voices of the people in this country, it angers me. It angers me that my tax dollars pay salaries to public officials and $85 a year for each bomb that's dropped on those Gazan children. There is an issue in this country where citizens feel that their feelings are the law. There is a huge misconception that Israel has a right to defend itself, and I'm here to tell you, it does not. United States imperialism is not the domination of this planet. They do not run this planet. International law states as an occupier, Israel as an occupier. They are not recognized as a country, therefore they do not have stand-your-ground rights like we have here in the United States of America. But people's feelings get involved, and all of a sudden, their feelings is what's right. But international law clearly says that Israel is an occupier, and they do not have a right to defend themselves when they have dogs in an open-air prison that they're poking and expecting not to bite, because that's how they treat them. When we talk about open-air prisons and what we have done to Gaza, our tax dollars for decades have done to Gazans, it disgusts me. It disgusts me that we haven't had these conversations sooner. It disgusts me that we're constantly told not to talk about politics and stay out of international law when international law directly impacts us. Do you guys want to get sanctioned? Because us being complicit with war crimes is going to impact me, it's going to impact everybody in this room, it's going to impact you. When you look at other countries that have been sanctioned, what happens? Their economy crumbles. Venezuela, for example. We had a high immigration, Biden lifting the sanctions on Venezuela back in November, and that immigration-migration process has slowed down. But we did that to them by placing sanctions. When this ends, when we finally get Israel to stop killing innocent people over false realities, there's going to be consequences for we, the people here in our country, because the rest of the world is not on our side. So I'm not understanding why our public officials, our public servants who get paid on our tax dollars are ignoring the voices of the people that pay those taxes. It's about time the public servants start listening to the people in America, including the Biden administration, for ignoring our voices and allowing congresspeople to get censured on their voices representing the people in their own communities. When are we going to represent what Cleveland Heights has stood for since the creation of this city? We have always been progressive. That is why I chose Cleveland Heights, and I was so saddened to see that this committee has not passed a House resolution on a ceasefire in Gaza. These are innocent lives. Stop talking about Hamas using children and humans as human shields. It's ridiculous, redundant, and propaganda. Get over it. Let's do a resolution, and let's do it now.
I want to thank everybody who came to speak tonight. I know our clerk of council can get back to some of you who brought up some questions for the administration, and so we'll do that. Now, we're going to do first readings, consideration of adoption requested. Addie, would you read the first one?
I've got Resolution Number 016-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing a renewal of an agreement with Flot Group Inc. for a subscription for a specialized road surveillance network and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 017-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with All City Management Services, Inc. for crossing guard services, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 018-2024 on first reading. A resolution reappointing Steve Cummings and Jody Taslett as members of the Commission on Aging of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Council of Cleveland. legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 019-2024 on first reading. A resolution opposing Ohio House Bill 68, HB 68, which restricts gender-affirming health care and sports participation for transgender youth, undermining the judgment of medical professionals, the recommendations of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and the intuition of the families who support transgender youth introduced by Councilmember Petrus.
Motion.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Please.
This evening, I urge my colleagues to support the passage of Resolution 19-2024. Lakewood City Councilwoman Cindy Strabig proposed that she and I pass a resolution in our respective cities opposing HB 68. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Strabig for her leadership in drafting this resolution. I'd like to also thank Mr. Drew Herzick and our state representative, Juanita Brent, for speaking in support of this resolution. And while she could not be here this evening, I'd like to also thank Ohio Senator Nikki Antonio for her support of this resolution. Most importantly, I'd like to thank Astrid Barkle and her family for being here and speaking in support of the resolution. They bravely shared their family's story with the local media and how HB 68 will affect them. Thank you again for being here this evening, and I hope that this resolution passes so that you know that Cleveland Heights City Council stands with you and is a place where all are welcome.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Addie, let's do 020-2024 next.
We just have one more before that, so.
Oh.
I have Ordinance Number 025-2024 on first reading, an ordinance to amend certain sub-paragraphs of Ordinance Number 198-2023 relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, repealing the prior version of Ordinance Number 198-2023, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 020-2024 on first reading, an ordinance authorizing funding for lifeguard positions for community swim events at the Cleveland Heights University Heights High School Pool introduced by Vice President Russell.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 020-2024 by substituting the version in the council packet for a version which includes the emergency language clause, quote, "Such emergency being the need to immediately seek applicants to fill these lifeguard positions in a timely manner," unquote.
Okay. Do I need a second for that, right?
Second.
And then we're voting on the motion? I'm sorry, on the amendment?
Yes, you had a motion to adopt, a second. You didn't have a motion to adopt. You could still do that, but you need to have a complete emergency clause. And so it would... It would start out in the same way that the language in Resolution 21-2024 starts out, so you would be substituting in Resolution 2024 the following language for the language that's currently in Section 3. It is necessary that this resolution become immediately effective as an emergency measure for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of the inhabitants of the City of Cleveland Heights, such emergency being the need to... What you said?
Such emergency being the need to immediately seek applicants to fill these lifeguard positions in a timely manner.
Okay. Wherefore, provided it receives the affirmative vote of five or more of the members elected or appointed to this council, this resolution, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage; otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest time allowed by law.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do I need to make a new motion, including that language that the law director just shared with us?
I'm going to let the law director decide that.
Yes. If you want to withdraw your prior motion, move to amend with the language that was just read into the record, that would do that.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw my previous motion. And, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to amend by substituting the version in the council packet for a version which includes the emergency language clause, quote, "It is necessary that this resolution become immediately effective as an emergency measure for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of the inhabitants of the City of Cleveland Heights, such emergency being the need to immediately seek applicants to fill these lifeguard positions in a timely manner. Wherefore, provided it receives the affirmative vote of five or more of the members elected or appointed to this council, this resolution shall effect and be enforced immediately upon this passage; otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest time allowed by law."
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, yes, please.
In the Committee of the Whole, I voiced some concerns about this legislation, and although I indicated at the end of that meeting that I would vote for it because it is apparent that there is a majority of council that is going to support this, there's still questions that I have that we have not sought answers for in proceeding with this legislation. And maybe most of the residents aren't aware of this, but the school district's budget is larger than the City of Cleveland's. The amount of tax revenue that the school district receives from the property tax bill far exceeds what the city receives. I just want there to be some equity and some parity between the city and the school district. And the question that I raise at the Committee of the Whole is, why isn't the school district offering to its residents memberships, as is the case in Beechwood, Lakewood, and also, I believe, Euclid, where the school district is providing the lifeguards in the facility? And I don't believe in any of those cases are the cities providing funding for that. The mayor has been negotiating a facility-sharing agreement with the school district. I don't know where that stands, but there should be some equity between both of these governments. We are providing the school district the ice skating rink without charge. I don't know what the value of that is. We are also providing them the use of the Denison Field without charge, and the employees that are attended at the use of that field and the skating rink, again, without charge. I just want there to be parity and equity between the school district and the city. We need to be prudent with our use of tax dollars, and those are the questions that I am raising about that. I'm willing to go along with this legislation to see how it works out as a pilot program, and it doesn't, so far as I can see, impair the mayor's right to continue to negotiate with a facility-sharing agreement. But going forward, I think this council needs to make sure that we are getting a fair deal with the school district when it comes to arrangements such as this. There's also, I believe, some work that remains to be done in terms of establishing what we're going to charge our residents for the use of the pool, how many lifeguards are going to be needed, what other staffing, what are the insurance costs going to be? So, again, we're proceeding quickly on this without having some questions answered.
Any other discussion? Please.
I just wanted to say I look forward to continuing to have this discussion. I've got several questions for the community. They're wondering why there's a little bit of confusion, and many of us have some questions, is that this was discussed in the committee but not Committee of the Whole. So there are some council persons, including myself, who either were not on the original committee and weren't a part of that discussion, or have had several questions after the fact. And so I'm looking forward to getting some answers and some clarity about where we are, how we got here, and what these numbers actually look like, now that we can discuss this again in Committee of the Whole. So if there's any confusion, it's because the committee members may have discussed this on the Parks and Rec Committee, but it never came to Committee of the Whole for the full council to have that discussion. And so we're having a discussion now to get some of these questions answered that maybe many of us had been sitting on for some time or as we're reviewing this legislation. And so just wanted to offer some color and some clarity to that. And so, again, I do have some questions, and I'm looking forward to having this conversation in Committee of the Whole going forward. Thank you.
Council, vice president?
Yes. I am in support of this resolution for the simple fact, this resolution has been out since November of last year, where all council members had an opportunity to look at it or bring their questions or information. We've had a long-time agreement with the city far as the lifeguards. The community has said over and over and over and over again, please, 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 don't make a mountain out of a molehill. Let's get some lifeguards. Let's get some swimming. I'm quite sure there's a contract, I know there's a contract that we've had for many years with the school district. All we're saying is, open that contract up and let the residents please swim in that pool. Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. I was on the Community Relations and Parks and Rec Committee that moved this forward to council, to the Committee of the Whole, and I'd like to say I support this legislation. We have a facility sitting up there that many of us could benefit from, and I believe that if we can get this moving forward, work out the details, the logistics of it, the legislation says we support the efforts of this city to allow our citizens to use that pool and whatever, how we ever would get there. This is a beginning of that discussion.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor?
President, thank you. Given that we are currently debating a motion to amend a piece of legislation, I'll restrict my comments to that. So this council is looking at making an emergency of this piece of legislation when it was introduced this evening. And I would like to express to the council that when it comes to the budget, the potential budget for any particular position in the administration at least, there really is no need for emergency legislation in order to achieve the goals that Councilman Petrus moved this evening, in terms of turning this into an emergency piece of legislation. But I will say that I appreciate what Councilman Cobb mentioned, that there are a lot of unanswered questions about this legislation. I can see the, you know, we can all count to five to make it an emergency and immediately effective, but there will still be questions about this legislation ongoing. I don't know if this council has any intention of bringing this back up as a topic, but perhaps this can be a conversation, a topic of conversation in the Community Relations and Recreation Committee ongoing, so that we can actually have the full conversation about this topic that I thought we had agreed on in our leadership meetings. But perhaps we'll have that conversation in another setting.
Anybody else? Yes.
So just for clarity, are we trying to move this from first reading and go ahead and pass this tonight?
Yes, we're going to do the motion first.
Okay, I have an issue with...
I'm sorry, the amendment first, and then...
Didn't we discuss that we would continue to have this conversation further? I know Councilman Cobb said he had some clarity, and he got a little bit of it at the table, but we never had an agreement that we would push this through tonight. Again, as a councilperson, this has never been discussed in Committee of the Whole. So whatever happened in that Committee of Council doesn't constitute a full discussion. So is anyone who was not on that committee when this was discussed going to be denied the right to have a conversation about legislation before it's passed? Because it's essentially what's happening. I would have had one opportunity, which is tonight, to discuss this and get any questions answered. Again, Councilman Cobb has a list of questions and clarity that it's clear even after his research that he still has issues on. So why are we doing this? This is the concern that I had, is that this has not been fully discussed. It was discussed in a committee, not Committee of the Whole. So you have a councilperson sitting here now who, for the first time, has an opportunity to have a dialogue and answer questions, and we're going to pass this tonight because a committee last year saw it, and it never went to Committee of the Whole for a full discussion. So that's my concern. I didn't agree to that. That's not what we discussed at the table in the other room, and maybe my colleagues can tell me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding this was coming back to Committee of the Whole for further discussion. So what changed between Committee of the Whole and this council meeting that we're in now with that conversation? I guess it's my question.
Well, I would just say, first of all, we did discuss it in Committee of the Whole today. And secondly, Councilman Cobb, do you want to address this? Because you were the person that actually...
Mr. President, I think...
Let me just ask Councilman Cobb a question. You were the one that said you were ready to go ahead with it.
Well, I don't see the necessity of passing this as an emergency legislation. We're simply authorizing the budgetary expenditure. There is still further work that needs to be done. We've indicated to the mayor that we're allocating the money, so to the extent that, you know, he needs to continue his discussion with the school district to finalize whatever arrangements they're going to be, I don't see the need to pass this as emergency legislation tonight. But as I said earlier, you know, and I will eventually vote for it.
Okay. Vice President Russell? Did you want... Nothing to add? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I was, I'm a little floored also, and my apologies. I thought that we agreed in Council of the Whole that there would be another Council of the Whole where we would further discuss the vet legislation, which is what the legislative process, I see. Young people in here, the legislative process includes vetting legislation, and we agreed to that in Council of the Whole, that we would at least have an additional Council of the Whole meeting opportunity to further vet the legislation. That's all.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I also think in doing this tonight, we're setting a very dangerous precedent. Again, I was not in that committee meeting for Parks and Rec when this is discussed. The expectation is that when we're reviewing legislation, it's coming out of committee, we'll continue that conversation with the other members of this council. That didn't happen. So stating that something was on the committee, on the agenda tonight and that was discussed is not the same as having a robust conversation. We discussed that for all of 10 minutes. And so if that's what we're calling a discussion, and I have some major concerns about how we're approaching this, I guess my question tonight is, every time a council member has something in committee and that committee has voted it out, it's going straight to a vote with no discussion in Committee of the Whole anymore? Because if that is the case, I have a problem with that, and that is not a process that is open and transparent and honest, and you cannot have a dialogue that way. So again, I'm asking this council, why are we not going back to Committee of the Whole like we committed to and said to continue this conversation? Or are we saying it doesn't matter that a member of council wasn't on that committee, and we've never fully had any questions answered or asked until tonight about a piece of legislation, but we're going to ram it through? So this is now the second week I'm feeling like we're rushing something through so that we can avoid having difficult conversations that we said we wouldn't mind having? So I need clarity again. Did I miss something tonight when we agreed in Committee of the Whole that this would come back to Committee of the Whole for further discussion? Did I miss something? I guess that's my question.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Could I please make a comment?
Yeah.
As all council members know, we received our packet for tonight's meeting on Thursday, and in that packet was Resolution 16-2024 regarding the flock cameras, which would obligate the city to $250,000 of expenditures. During Committee of the Whole, we spent just a few minutes talking about that, and council unanimously passed that. Also, we talked about Resolution 17-2024, which is obligating the city to $140,000 of expenditures, half of which would be reimbursed by the school district. And again, that's another piece of legislation that we unanimously passed. And so the legislation that Councilwoman Russell introduced passed through the committee at the end of the year. I think that it's hard to say that we weren't aware of this. We've been receiving, or at least I have, received a lot of communications from residents in this city. Residents in Cleveland Heights want their tax dollars to be used for this purpose, and as has been noted... want their tax dollars to be used for this purpose. And as has been noted, the city can sell passes to offset the cost of this. So from my perspective, I am not concerned with the time of this. And I think that especially after Councilman Cobb, at the end of the count, of the committee of the whole meeting, said that he was then comfortable with this legislation, moving forward with it. I think that it is okay for us to move ahead with it and that we should do so without further delay.
Addie, can I ask you what the vote was to move this to first reading for passage?
That vote was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say something?
Mr. President?
I, I don't think we took that vote.
Right. I've got questions. When it just hap, like what is going on here?
President, if I might-
Yes.
There was a vote taken to amend the agenda to move this into a place that is within the consideration of adoption requested. But this was not, is not currently an emergency. And so if it's not an emergency, I just want to make this point as you're moving forward.
Right.
The require, if it's not an emergency, the requirement for two readings has to be approved, has to be waived by a vote of five members of council. So right now, you've got motion to amend to make this an emergency, which means essentially that it becomes effective immediately. But it, and it would overcome the need for a second reading unless waived. But if it's not made an emergency tonight, and there's been discussion about that, then if you were to want to pass it tonight, you would have to suspend the rules requiring two readings otherwise. And then you would vote on the legislation.
Mr. President?
Well-
I, I, I'd already asked twice, right after Councilman Petrus. I want to bring some clarity and add a little bit of, of comment to what he stated. Everything that you stated is true, except for one issue. There was no questions being asked about those pieces of legislation. But I think if our colleagues are feeling uncomfortable or they have a list of questions, you can't lump that into legislation and no one had questions about and say, let's pass that too. I think it's disingenuous to look at it that way. I think if any of us would come with a list of questions that Councilman Cobb had, and he wasn't the only one with questions, I made it very clear that night, I don't see any wrong, anything wrong with us putting this on a second reading and continuing the conversation. So are we saying that these questions don't matter? Or are we saying that no one else's questions matter because Vice President Cobb, excuse me, Councilman Cobb got his questions answered? I, I guess I'm still confused. There was no discussion in committee of whole about this legislation, no robust conversation, not in 2023, and not this year until tonight in committee of the whole. And that is not enough time to both ask questions and get them answered. You have the packet on Thursday, but the packet does not give you answers to questions you haven't asked yet. It only starts the conversation when we get to the table. And again, it seems to me like this council is avoiding having difficult conversations. We want to do side conversations and emails and pass things through. There's absolutely no reason to make this an emergency tonight. And I find it very interesting that any other time, our public comes in here and says, stop slapping emergencies on everything. And here we are adding one and saying it's because the community wants it, when they've been telling us for the last several months, they don't want emergency legislation. So what are we doing here? So my question is, why are we not having a conversation about this? And we've only heard about it and been able to discuss it tonight in committee of the whole?
Can I just ask the members, do you, do you want to do this tonight? Or do you want to do it?
Mr. President, you already have a motion and a second to amend by substitution. You should vote on that. That will lead you to believe if there's going to be emergency clause added. And then you can move on from there to go to the next-
Fair enough. We'll, we'll vote on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Why don't we do a roll call on the amendment?
Boyd? Oh, you're voting on the amendment to add emergency language?
No.
Cobb?
No.
Kuta?
Yes.
Larson?
Aye.
Maddox?
No.
Russell?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes. Now we can vote on the legislation.
Don't we have to vote on a suspension of rules?
Not, not-
Not before?
With the emergency language appended, it only requires one reading. But to be effective as an emergency takes five votes. So just keep that in mind.
Understood.
So now we would need a motion and vote to adopt.
Do we have a motion to move, to pass this legislation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Absolutely. I still think that this is dishonest to continue to push things through and call it a discussion when it was not discussed, but for only 10 or 15 minutes tonight in committee of the whole. And I think we're setting a dangerous precedent. I think the way that we handle this is completely dishonest and isn't transparent at all. And if we're going to push things out of committee to hold because three people voted on it and then try to shove it through committee to hold, excuse me, their committee, and then shove it through committee to hold, I think this public needs to take a closer look at how we're doing business. This is now the third week I've had this conversation. We need to start being more transparent about legislation. If this was that important and that special, why didn't we invest more time in having this conversation in committee of the whole? Why didn't we, it, when he asked all of these questions, there, there was no interest at all in getting him answers tonight. How, how would Councilman Cobb, had he not done his own research tonight, got answers to that at the table? What if he didn't have the technology that many of our members of our public don't even want us using tonight? We have issues with how we're communicating with each other, how we're working together, and how we're reviewing legislation. No legislation deserves less than 10 or 15 minutes and then call it a discussion. None. What we're doing tonight is wrong. This was in a committee. It was moved to committee to hold and for the first time discussed tonight. And after 10 minutes, even with other colleagues having questions, we've said, we do not care. We're going to put this in here, try to make it an emergency measure and pass it anyway. And maybe it doesn't matter with the pool legislation, but what about the next piece? And the next piece after that? And the next piece after that? We need to have a conversation about what dialogue is and what a really robust conversation about our legislation looks like. Because 10 or 15 minutes in committee of the whole is not enough to tell this public that we have truly vetted it and done our research. It just is not. It's wrong. So I will be voting no on this. And anything else we try to shove through on this council last minute out of committee of the whole when there are questions, clear, open questions, legitimate questions that my colleagues have. This is wrong. And I just want to make sure that the public recognizes that we have spent 10 to 15 minutes invested in this legislation in committee of the whole outside of that previous committee meeting last year. And I dare someone to tell me that I'm wrong. When did we discuss this in committee of the whole?
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
So thank you.
Okay. And, and I look at this as, you know, everybody has to decide what's enough, you know, discussion. Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to say?
No, I'm, I'm, the only thing I'm saying is, we have legislation all the time. And it could be any given day that we pass legislation on one reading. There's any given council meeting that we have discussion on legislation, maybe not as vigorous as we should, but we have that take place all the time. The residents know that. We have passed legislation on first reading many, many times. And this is nothing really different. I know Councilman Cobb said he had some questions. He indicated that he got his questions answered after getting some research on his computer. Councilman Patrick says, let's move it forward. I'm willing to move it forward because I know the residents want this and we have done this on many occasions.
Councilwoman?
Thanks. I would just also add that we've also stopped legislation when we didn't feel that it was fully vetted. We've, we've halted it. It's not, we've not only passed legislation when contracts with the state or grants required immediate passage, but we have also stopped legislation when we've not fully vetted it. So I wanted to just add that for the public's understanding.
All right. Any other? Okay.
I'll be brief. So, and, and this, with all due respect to my council members, when we got the packet and we were in our committee of the whole, this was indicated as a first reading only, which meant we were just going to have a discussion on this legislation. Tonight is the first night that we've had a robust discussion on this legislation as a city council. We should not be moving something off of a first readings to an emergency piece of legislation under the circumstances that occurred tonight. That is my objection to passing this as an emergency piece of legislation. We are setting a bad precedent doing that.
Okay. So I'm not hearing any other further discussion. I would just say that the, the community has been asking for this for a long time. And I really do appreciate Vice President Russell bringing this forward. As far as the conversation we've had here, I think it's all valid. You know, I, I would just say that everybody has to decide what's enough. You need a five votes to pass it on emergency. So that's how we can make that decision. So Addie, would you please call the roll?
Russell?
Aye.
Maddox?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Cobb?
No.
Boyd? Kuta?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
The motion fails to get five votes. So it now goes to second, would it automatically go to-
It's passed. It doesn't take effect for 30 days.
Oh, I see. My bad, the motion passes. I misunderstood. All right. Next legislation, Addie?
Next, I have Resolution number 21 dash 2024 on first reading, a resolution supporting and authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources' Clean Ohio Trails Fund Program for a grant under the program and to accept funding if awarded and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Okay, we need an amendment by substitution here. Addie, do I have that right?
Law Director, do we need to do that tonight? Or can we do an amended version on second The ODNR grant.
If you're not voting tonight, you can do that next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No, we're not voting on that tonight.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. These are first reading only.
Next, I have ordinance number 026 dash 2024 on first reading, an ordinance to establish a living wage for employees of the City of Cleveland Heights in order to promote the economic well-being of its workforce, reduce income inequality, and ensure that city employees can meet their basic needs, introduced by Vice President Russell.
All right, I'm referring this to committee of the whole. Second readings?
I have Resolution number 014 dash 2023 on second reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the amended Community Development Block Grant entitlement application and plan for the year beginning January 1st, 2019, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution number 015 dash 2024 on second reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the Community Development Block Grant entitlement application for the year beginning January 1st, 2024, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
President Kuta?
Yes.
I'd like to acknowledge the work that's gone into producing the CDBG requested funding for our community. There are many people that will benefit from these funds. And it takes hours and hours of interviewing these agencies to get to this point. So I would like to say that I'm in favor of this resolution and acknowledging the fact that there's a lot of work involved in, and discussion to get to this point.
Thank you. I'd second that. There's a lot of people on that committee and they're geographically diverse. And I would say diverse in every other way. And I think they do a great job. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Moving on to third readings, I have Resolution number 190 dash 2023 on third reading as amended, an ordinance adopting and enacting new chapters 769 and short-term rentals and 161 transient occupancy tax, introduced by President Kuta.
Okay, and I'm referring this to committee, to the housing committee. Fourth readings?
Uh, nope, we moved that one up. So we're going to consent agenda.
All right.
I have Resolution number 022 dash 2024 on first reading, a resolution recognizing March 2024 as Red Cross Month in the City of Cleveland Heights and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Councilmember Maddox, Councilmember Boyd, Councilmember Cobb, Councilmember Larson, and Councilmember Petrus. I also have Resolution number 023 dash 2024 on first reading, a resolution recognizing March 2024 as Women's History Month and March 8th, 2024 as International Women's Day, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adoption?
We need to suspend rules.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend rules for the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports. Councilwoman Larson?
You're at the end. Go ahead.
Oh, I guess-
Mr. President, Housing and Building Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 13th. During this meeting, among other things, the committee authorized the creation of a housing-related survey. Survey will serve as an easy opportunity for residents to share housing-related concerns with the committee that the committee will then be able to use in prioritizing its work for the year. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Housing and Building Committee is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 12th. During the committee of the whole meeting, council members and the administration agreed that we would have a special meeting maybe in a week or two so that we could further discuss the short-term legislation and try to get it over the finish line. That's all, Mr. President.
Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you, President Kuta. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee met on the 13th this week. Council Russell and I discussed some ideas for 2024 legislation. I will be sharing those ideas at a meeting with Mayor Sarin on February 29th. Please submit your applications for the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Citizens Committee and the Transportation and Mobility Citizens Committees, chance to become engaged with the activities that are going on in City Hall. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email or call me. Those applications are up. You just research or search for boards and commissions applications on the city's website. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee, next meeting is March 18th at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other committee reports?
To follow up on Councilmember Larson, we are having an Administrative Services Committee meeting this Monday at 4:00 PM. At that meeting, we will be reviewing outstanding committee and commission vacancies. So if you're interested in serving on the two committees that Council Member Larson just mentioned, please go to our website and submit applications for those positions. Also, at the request of Council President Kuta, we're also going to discuss our application process generally. And we'll also look at what changes need to be made to our forms that are currently on the website and whether we need to make some changes for that. So I, I encourage all council members to please attend or watch next Monday at 4:00 PM.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports? Old business, new business.
I have, I'm going to be introducing several pieces of legislation for us to review in terms of supporting what's happening over with our Palestinian brothers and sisters. And so I just want to let this council know they can expect to see that next week at the committee of the whole. And I'm hoping this time they will actually have a conversation about it. I'm going to continue to make submissions until we can get to some type of dialogue. And I'm hoping that someone will stand with me to at least start that conversation. The second thing that I want to make sure that this council knows that I'm bringing up is, I, I have some issues with some of the statements that were made last weekend. So as we are discussing council rules and how we'll move forward in terms of our committee assignments and chairman assignments, I think we need to take a look at conflict of interest a little bit more and how we operate. I, I have some major concerns in terms of some of the major projects that are coming up in this city and where many of us have allegiances in who we represent. The fact that we have council members who are saying that they can or cannot make statements based on their unions, who are also overseeing planning and development, and every project in this city is a problem. And so as we're talking about rules and policies and regulations, we need to have a larger conversation about what that means in terms of decision-making and how we make decisions in terms of future projects in this city, all of which will be touched by the unions in somehow. the unions in somehow. And so when we're talking about council rules next week, I don't want to spring this on anyone, but I'll let them know that I, I pulled up several things we need to take a look at and discuss to make sure that we are covering ourselves, because I have grave concerns about how we're approaching many of our projects in this city and these committees assignments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
So the announcement?
Okay.
The date for the Third Annual Amazing Women of Cleveland Heights Celebration has been set for March 21st at 6:30 at the Cleveland Heights Community Center. Applications for those who wish to nominate someone will be available soon on the city's website. Categories for this year are Amazing Women in Cleveland Heights will be, will have four awards, Outstanding Businesswomen, four awards, and Inspiring Young Women, one award. So I hope you all be as energetic as you were last year at identifying the amazing women in this city. Thank you.
Vice President Russell?
New business. I want everybody to keep a lookout for the Third Pathway to Home Ownership Seminar, which is going to take place March 2, 2024, from 12:30 PM to 3:00 PM at the Urban Cities Coles. The address is 3696 Mayfield Row, right on the corner of Mayfield and Lee Road. There will be free lunch from 12:30 to 1:00. You'll get a chance to talk to independent financial institutions one-on-one, as, as well as lenders and real estate. And based on the comment of, talked about unions, I just want to make people clear that, please don't put words in my mouth and don't think about what you assume is happening or what's going on. I know how to speak for myself, and there's no assumptions that need to be made. I can always clarify anything I need to clarify for myself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Presidents, Council presidents report. Well, this is our last meeting in February. I got my Miles Davis T-shirt on for Black History Month. If you've never listened to Kind of Blue, I mean, and there's so many great Miles Davis records, I can't, you know, there's uncountable, but that's a really great place to start and just work your way out from there. I want to thank Astrid. You made it, you put a smile on everybody's face. This was a lot to take in tonight, huh? I mean, this is, you gotta write a report on this. And I'll just let everybody know that Vice President Russell and I will be meeting with Forest Hills residents on Tuesday, March 5 at Forest Hill Church. We hope the Forest Hill residents can make that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.